Mayor staff is ready when you are.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento City Council, please come to order with the clerk call the roll, please, to establish a quorum.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Ashby?
Here.
Councilmember Laloe?
Here.
Councilmember Harris?
Here.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Here.
Councilmember Chenier?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Gata?
Here.
Councilmember Jennings?
Here.
Councilmember Vang?
Here.
And Mayor Steinberg?
I am here. Good evening. Let me ask, who should I ask? Councilmember Harris, would you lead us in the land acknowledgement and the pledge of allegiance, please?
I'd be happy to do the pledge.
Okay, the land acknowledgement. Councilmember Gata, would you lead us in the, in the land acknowledgement?
Please rise for the opening acknowledgement in honor of Sacramento's indigenous people and tribal lands. To the original people of this land, the Nisanon people, the Southern Maidu, the Valley and Plains Meowak, the Putwin and Winton people, and the people of the Wilton Rancheria, Sacramento's only federally recognized tribe. And we acknowledge and honor the native people who came before us and still walk beside us today on these ancestral lands, choosing to gather today in the act of practice of acknowledgement and appreciation for Sacramento's indigenous people, history, contribution, and lives. Thank you.
And our heart and pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good. Good evening, or good afternoon to everyone. We have two significant discussion items on today's agenda, but first we have a consent calendar. Members, are there any items you'd like to have taken up separately? Or talk about separately? Let me turn on my little thing here. I don't see anybody. Do we have public testimony on the consent calendar?
Mayor, I have no hands raised to make public comment on the consent calendar.
Okay, take a motion in a second.
Move consent, sir.
Move consent. Councilmember Harris, seconded by?
I second.
Seconded by Councilmember Laloe. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Ashby?
Aye.
Councilmember Laloe?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Councilmember Chenier?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Gata?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes. All right, the consent calendar passes nine to nothing. Let's move to item eight, the Storm Drainage Ballot Election Results.
Thank you and good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I'm Bill Bue State, the Director of the Department of Utilities. I have a short six-minute presentation and then I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have. I'm pleased to inform you that the Storm Drainage Property Related Fee Ballot Election was a success with 52.3% support. Tonight's staff is seeking council adoption of a resolution certifying the Storm Drainage Property Related Fee Ballot Election, establishing a Storm Drainage Property Related Fee, establishing the Storm Drainage Property Related Fee Fund, and authorizing the city manager or designee to perform billing assessments. This new Storm Drainage Fee is in addition to the current storm drainage rate that was last increased in 1996. Revenues from this fee will be placed in a separate fund to finance capital improvements that will, among other things, have the benefits shown on this slide. It is anticipated that the construction funded by this fee will generate 600 to 700 jobs over the next 10 years. The Department of Utilities followed the three-step process for approval of a Storm Drainage Property Related Fee, which is required by Proposition 218. First, protest mailers were sent in December and January to all impacted property owners. Second, a rate hearing with the Utilities Rate Advisory Commission was conducted on January 26th. And third, authorization from City Council was received on February 1st to conduct the Storm Drainage Property Related Fee Ballot Election. On February 9th, 130,071 ballots for 154,879 parcels were mailed to all property owners who are receiving storm drainage services and subject to the proposed fee. Ballots were weighted by one vote per parcel. Property owners had until March 16th to submit completed ballots to the city clerk's office. A prepaid postage return envelope was provided to property owners for ease of returning the ballots. Additionally, DOU set up a phone line and email address to respond to customer questions during the ballot process. Staff responded to more than 280 customer inquiries. Ballots were tabulated and certified by SCI Consulting Group from March 17th to March 24th. This effort was coordinated with the city clerk's office to address any questions about returned ballots. In order for the ballot measure to pass, Proposition 218 requires that of all the ballots returned, 50% plus one must vote for approval. A total of 42,407 ballots were returned, which is about 27% of all the ballots mailed. As stated earlier, 52.3%, so the 3% of the votes were in support of the fee. These are the proposed fee amounts for residential properties. For each customer tier, the average impervious square footage within that tier was used to calculate the fee. This results in a monthly fee of just under $6 per month for 72% of the residential customers. 23% of the residential customers will pay $3.13 per month or less. These are the impervious surface coefficients for the non-residential properties. Non-residential properties are also assessed based on impervious area multiplied by the rate of just under 2 cents per impervious square foot per month or per year. This methodology constitutes best practices in the state. Shown as a hypothetical example of a commercial building on a 20,000-square-foot parcel or just under a half acre, resulting in a fee of about $28 per month. About 12% of stormwater customers are non-residential. The resolution we are requesting council to adopt authorizes the city manager or designee, upon request of the customer, to perform a stormwater billing assessment. This assessment can be performed for the current storm drainage fee, the new fee, or both. Parcels will be assessed based on the extent to which the parcel is determined to contribute to the storm drain system. If the city manager or his designee determines that a parcel owner is being overbilled for storm drainage services rendered to that parcel, the storm drainage fee may be reduced, consistent with the principles contained in the Storm Drain Utility Property Related Fee Study. Currently, there are approximately 8,790 participants in the Sacramento Utilities Rate Assistance Program as of the end of March. Unless directed otherwise, the Department of Utilities will include the new storm drainage fee into the Sacramento Utilities Utility Rate Assistance Program. The current annual budget of the program is $3.78 million. If a budget adjustment to the program is needed due to the addition of this fee and the recent recycling and solid waste rate adjustment, it will be addressed during the mid-year budget process. Per direction received from the Budget Audit Committee, DOU will be returning to that committee in the coming months to discuss possible structure changes to the CERA program. In closing, staff recommends council adopt a resolution certifying the Storm Drainage Property Related Fee Ballot Election, establishing a Storm Drainage Property Related Fee, establishing the Storm Drainage Property Related Fee Fund, and authorizing the city manager or designee to perform billing assessments. If the resolution is adopted, staff will proceed with configuring the billing system and the fee will be implemented starting on January 1st, 2022. And now I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
All right, well, landslide. But, but as they say, a W is a W. And congratulations, Mr. Bue State, Mr. Director. Very good. Let's, I see Councilmember Vang, who is up, and then Councilmember Harris.
Thanks, Mayor. Really, really good news. I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank Bill and all of our incredible city staff for just their hard work in doing the education piece to our community about the importance of this ballot measure. I'm also really grateful to have been part of some of those educational webinars and be part of a team that really made this happen and got us across the finish line. As many of you heard from Bill, you know that our current levels of revenues does fall significantly below. That's significantly below of what we actually need to properly invest in our drainage infrastructure. And so really thrilled to see that the voters in the city passed it. What this means is that our city will have the funds to really address our infrastructure needs, our storm drainage system, which is over 100 years old. So we know we have aging pipelines and pumps. And so I'm just really excited that the voters did vote to pass this. And so we're going to be able to do more, to have resources, 20 million, as a matter of fact, to do more as a city to protect our quality, our water quality, and also protect our residents. And with that, Mayor, I'd like to have the honor of moving this item to adopt the resolution to certify the new storm drainage rate.
So moved. Councilmember Harris?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. As we found out during the last big water event, the atmospheric river in October, our storm drainage within the levee system pertaining to the system definitely develops localized flooding. We saw it in Tahoe Park, saw a little bit in McKinley Park, although that was mostly mitigated by the McKinley Waterfall. But we have real structural problems with our infrastructure, and I think these were duly noted by our DOU team. You know, it's tough to do a fee increase. It's hard on some people, but with the CERA program, we can make sure that those people who are affected by this adversely will actually not be, that they will not, you know, feel the stress of an increased utility bill from the drainage rate increase. This is a win for the city. As has been said many times, we haven't had an increase in 26 years, but our infrastructure hasn't been upgraded, you know, as substantially as it needs to be. This is a good thing for the city, and I would like to second the motion.
Right, it's been moved and seconded. Thank you so much. Is there public testimony?
Mayor, I have one hand raised to make comments on this item. It's Barry Boyd.
Thank you and good afternoon. I do have a question in regards to this agenda item. Reading a e-comment from a Matthew, I believe it's kissing. According to his email, I just want to see if, in fact, if his email is factual that the City of Sacramento's manager vote is accounted for 2,000 parcels. And my question is, if that is in fact true, why did the city manager's vote count for 2,000 parcels instead of those parcels being able to vote, have their own say in their vote to which way they wanted to vote? And according to the email, bringing it up because that 2,000 votes that that one vote accounted for was 4.7% of the total votes counted, to which is, I believe, a little more than the difference of this agenda item that passed by. So if, that is my question again, why did the city manager's vote count for 2,000 votes? And why weren't those 2,000 parcels able to cast for themselves? That's all. Thank you.
Is there an answer to that question?
Yes, there is, Mayor. The city voted for the parcels that they own and the parcels that they pay the storm drainage fee on.
Okay, thank you for the explanation. All right, we do have a motion in a second. This is really important work. And, you know, it's one of those, it's not high-profile, doesn't make the clippings all the time. But it's really a very important part of what the city does, and you did this well. You took it out at the people in the right way, and you're delivering infrastructure, needed infrastructure for the city, a lot of jobs, and will be good for many generations to come. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, let's call the roll, please.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Laloe?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Councilmember Chenier?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Gata?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes. All right. The people said yes, and the council said yes. Very good. We move on. We move on to item nine, which is a, not an action item, but a verbal report, a normal report on the comprehensive siting plan. Who's presenting today?
Mayor, I'm going to kick it off here. This is, as you recall, a direction received from council about a monthly update on the comprehensive siting plan. This follows the weekly email updates that we provide to you. We thought it would be a good idea on a monthly basis to not only talk about the siting plan and the implementation, but also talk about the financials that go along with it. So I'm going to have Ryan Moore, our Public Works Director, kick it off, supported by Nick Golling in DCR, and then bringing it home is Danielle Foster. So, Ryan, you want to get us started?
Sure, I would be happy to. Good evening, Mayor and Councilman Ryan Moore. I'm your Director of Public Works. Let me share my screen really quick. I have a short presentation. Okay, hopefully everyone can see that. So we're going to start with an update on the siting work plan. So as we know, many of the sites in the-
Ryan, Ryan, you might want to open that up.
Oh, sorry about that.
Thank you.
There we go.
Perfect.
Okay, so as I think most folks know, many of the sites in the original comprehensive siting plan have been deemed infeasible for a variety of different reasons. However, a new updated work plan has materialized out of those sites comprised of some of the sites that were within that plan and additional sites that have been subsequently identified. So there's eight sites that are currently on that work plan. I'm going to go through them briefly and give you a status update on them. So the first one is Joshua's House. This is a city-owned parcel in District 2 off of North Gate Boulevard and patio. So we have a private partner who is proposing putting together a private hospice site for those experiencing homelessness. We have put in place a lease agreement between the city and the property owner. That's ready to go. And just last week, I believe, we actually received an application from that applicant. So that site is moving forward, and we expect to see that going through the plan check process here in the next few months and implemented hopefully within calendar year 2022. The next site is the Miller Park site. So this is a safe parking, safe ground site with approximately 60 tents. The cap improvement pieces, such as it is, is mainly just fencing and some minor administrative support. That's up and running. So Nick Golling was on board. He was going to talk to us a little bit about what's going out at, what's going on at the Miller Park site right now.
Thank you very much, Ryan. This location opened for services for guests at that spot in that immediate neighborhood as of the 8th of February of this year. Absolutely been a fantastic improvement over our previous operations around the W and X freeway. This location provides 24/7 support services as well as daily case management to help guests identify their barriers to housing and move them to the next appropriate step. There's a potential to serve up to 110 people at max capacity amongst the 60 tents. We also have 24/7 site security, as is planned with many of the potential projects within the CSP. That is aimed to help alleviate any potential issues which may arise in the surrounding area using de-escalation through a trauma-informed model. Only if there's issues which are beyond their ability to de-escalate, in those cases, will law enforcement be notified. As of today, there's been 138 people served out of that location, and 25 of those have actually exited into positive destinations.
The next site, we have the Auburn Boulevard Service Hub. Again, the cap improvement phase is complete, so I'll let Nick bring you up to see, you know, what's happening out there.
Absolutely. So as determined by City Council, this site is currently staffed to be used as an administrative space for the contractor, which is Hope Cooperative, as well as for DCR. And it's ready to deploy with, as determined according to specific weather criteria, which was decided on March 1st at City Council to serve as a respite center. And again, 24/7 security with the same approach, same agency is also deployed at this location.
And the North Fifth Street Shelter.
So North Fifth Street Shelter is operated by Shelter, Inc. The prior guest capacity before the comprehensive siting plan was 104 total guests. Also, WellSpace has been operating an interim care program at that location. Interim care is for individuals experiencing homelessness that are not ill enough to remain in the hospital, but they're not quite well enough to even be in just a normal emergency shelter. So this is locations for folks to rest and recover. That is an 18-space section of the facility. So after we completed our updated facility use agreement with the county, as this is a county building, the capacity was increased to 163. Currently, the capacity has been increased to 145 total guests and will increase to the full 163 guests at the end of June, when ICP will no longer be operating at that location.
And the next one is the Downtown Service Hub. So this is a location that the city continues to work with in collaboration with the county. We are in negotiations to finalize an agreement for that site. That's the extent of the information we could share at this time, but more to come in the future as this continues to develop. The Coal Fax Yard, this is the site in District 2 where we have a safe parking operation envisioned. We have done the design work on it. We've gone through the process with the state water board to get the site authorized. It had previously been closed due to a land use covenant associated with some past toxic contamination. While the site has been authorized for use by the water board, they have issued us an order to clean up the site as there is some authorized campers out there. That work is underway as we speak. It will eventually have a capacity of approximately 30 vehicles. The next steps for this one are to, again, clean the site and get capital improvements constructed that consist of fence. We've already paved the site, I think, as everybody knows. And then move out the restroom facilities and administrative facilities and other things of that nature. The site will eventually have a capacity of approximately 30 vehicles. Next one, Roseville Road RT Station. So this is another one we've been working on for a while. The design is complete. We are, we continue to work through negotiations on a three-party agreement between the city, Caltrans, and Sacramento Regional Transit for use of the site. Once that's complete, we will have a 12-month term to operate a safe parking zone for approximately 50 vehicles. And the last site on our list is the Job Corps Site, otherwise known as the 102-acre site down between Consumers River Boulevard and Meadowview. This is just south of the recycling, solid waste corp yard we have off of Meadowview. So the site currently does not have any access, so there's no way to actually get on the site. There is one small pedestrian access location, but there's no way to get vehicles on. We did get a right-of-entry for some maintenance work from the property owners to the south. But in terms of access to provide some kind of construction of any kind of operations on that site, that is still underway. We have negotiations happening on the north end of the site with the Department of Labor, which the mayor has been very engaged on, as has District 8. We also have a negotiation underway with the private property owner on the south end of the site to get access to the site. D8 is also engaged in some outreach efforts with the Meadowview community about what a longer-term site might look like. And so that concludes the update on the sites in the comprehensive siting plan. So unless there are questions, I will stop sharing and hand it off to Danielle Foster, who can share the financial piece.
You.
Good evening, council. So to start, some of these financials we've provided pieces of, we're trying to bring them all together in one location to give an overview tonight. This is the financial piece, just looking at the state and federal grants that we're using for the shelter operations, breaking it down between the ESG, which is a federal grant, half-two and half-three funds. The half-three funds are what we're anticipating in the upcoming fiscal year based on the allocation that the states announce for the city. So on the left, there's the annual operations, the capacity, and then showing any capital improvements with Grove. We are anticipating that expansion and have estimated capital improvements that will come through ESG. And then this updated annual contract amount is for the expanded shelter capacity. Same with North Fifth, as was discussed, the expansion piece there also paid through ESG and the ongoing contract. For X Street, we have that funded through September of 2023. So it's not an additional expense in the upcoming fiscal year, but will come up in September of 2023. And then looking at what we've used to fund ARPA-funded shelters. We focused on the City Motel Voucher Program, the City Motel Program, which is a combination of ARPA and of course the FEMA reimbursements at this time. Those will continue through June. At this point, we're waiting to hear if there will be any extensions beyond June. And then the related services with that, the wraparound services that are provided both through the City of Refuge and Step Up that are both onsite services connecting to resources as well as rehousing efforts to ensure that clients are moving into housing. And we've had 161 permanent housing exits from that program to date in less than a year. And then, of course, our women and family sheltering that's also been funded through the ARPA funds out of that 41 million bucket. And Safe Grounds, as we've just discussed, the variety of Safe Grounds through the comprehensive siting plan. While WX was closed, that had been funded before through some general fund dollars. And then we have ARPA money going through the three that are both existing and planned on Safe Grounds and ARPA funds that were set aside for the capital costs on Roseville Road in addition to the Coal Fax capital costs.
I know, real quickly, I thought what we saw was in Ryan's stuff was 50 cars, and you've got 70 here?
Yeah, that number. Brian, is it down to 50?
No, I can jump in on that. So I think there's, that's an approximate number. The X factor is how many of those might be more sedan, light-duty vehicle versus RVs.
So it could be a range there, just based on size.
Okay, thank you.
Great question. So bringing all of the sheltering costs together onto one slide, we can see that using the ARPA funds this year to support some of the sheltering costs, that's totaled about 10.8 million in addition to the state and federal fund resources that we've used. And then going forward, once we do need to refund X Street and all of the other sheltering, it's at about 33.5 billion. We think for 2023, we have pulled together the funds to cover all of the sheltering pieces through both the half-three- both the the half-three allocation from the state as well as some redirected project funds within DCR and the funds that council had set aside through the budget process at mid-year to kind of assist with budget gaps. So it looks like for twenty twenty-three, we've been able to figure out the sheltering costs, but just want to highlight that for the next fiscal year after that is when we'll look at this thirty-three million and and figure out the funding sources for that. And so putting that ten point eight million into kind of the overall forty-one million of ARPA, this is the capital cost side and how they all kind of fit together to show how we get to about forty-one million with the ARPA funds and that includes expenses, capital improvements on the sites listed to the left. So Miller Park, some of the work that's been done for Roseville Road as well as just funding that's set aside for the scope of work. Same with Colfax, both some of the work spent, the funds spent to date as well as just to set aside for that site. The cost of purchasing the Meadowview site and then funds set aside for the downtown hub, recognizing that that will likely be a higher number, but as part of the forty-one million, this is the amount that's set aside. And then the funding so far for the funding for Auburn Hub and then cost to do the SEQA analysis for the Conference of Siting Plan, that mid-year sheltering number and then overall programming. And that's how we get to.
The downtown hub money, that's not operations at all, right? This is all capital?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Danielle, I really appreciate the comprehensiveness of the spreadsheet. I mean, it's you know, sort of long for a while here to sort of see everything in in one place where we could assess sources and uses and 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 this, I think, gives us a clear picture and appreciate the creativity of the manager and team of trying to figure out how we plug the thirty-three million dollar gap, if you will, for next year. And probably known this was going to be iterative. And given what the decision made last week and if the voters approve it, we're going to need to find ways to find more money, obviously, to be able to more dramatically increase our capacity.
Mr. Mayor, can I add just real quick before council comments?
Yeah.
So, so I spoke with the mayor earlier about this and, you know, we we talked about the last time we did the update, there was a thirty-three million dollar gap. As Danielle pointed out, and the teams worked really hard to try and figure out how we repurpose some dollars to cover the gap for this coming year because, you know, it, we did not want to be in a situation where we would shut some of these beds down come July one. I just want to make sure it's, I clarify that some of the money that we use to plug this gap were actually dollars in the out years for things like respite centers and whatnot, but we we anticipate more money coming in. So we've just pulled those dollars forward to to cover this, the thirty-three million. In addition to looking at all the the various resources that we have, as Daniel pointed out, in in looking and prepping for our budget this coming fiscal year. So we do have some work to do. We have another cliff coming up in twenty-four, twenty-five when some of these contracts come up. And, you know, Danielle and the team did a good job of putting that all in one spreadsheet. It's very complicated because many of these agreements had come forward over time and they have different terms and, you know, when they drop off and when they pick up and it becomes a little bit complicated to look at. So but but I appreciate the team and I just wanted to share that so that the council knew that we're just front-loading a lot of the the financial resources we have to cover this gap coming July one.
Very good. Thank you. We've got all the council members who are up. That's great. Do we have public testimony?
Yes, Mayor, I have two hands raised to make public testimony.
Let's hear from the public and then we'll turn it over to the council.
Thank you. The first is Barry Boyd.
Thank you. I do have a question. City Manager Chan just answered part of it in regards to, well, my question is from which entities are some of the fundings going to be reduced from the DCR funds in addition to the respite centers? As City Manager Chan just stated, could you just give us a a few more of those entities from where the forward funding monies are looking to come from? Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Well, let's hear from the city managers.
Question, go ahead. Right, we're not, we're not looking at unfunding any of the current operators here. We had set aside money in the five-year forecast, for instance, for respite. And those would have been expansions of current contracts. And so in lieu of keeping those dollars out in the out years, we pull them to the fore so that we can help cover the gap. So we're not reducing anybody's contracts at this point.
Okay, next caller, please.
Next caller is Daniel Aderholdt. Daniel Aderholdt.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. I would like to know why we keep doing shelters when we all know that they cannot last. The shelters are been proven over and over again to fail because of funding. Why can't we get homes for our homeless and get them off the streets and buy land, which last time I talked to you guys a year ago before I was fighting my cancer, you guys were talking about doing. I've been gone for a while. I've been out here with my micro homes crews, but I've been having a lot of cancer surgeries and I'm really appalled by what I'm seeing going on on the streets today. It's like a witch hunt against the homeless right now. Mayor Steinberg, you say you're helping the homeless, one helped the homeless, third time I'm out there with the homeless. The police are asking the homeless, tell them they got to leave. They got to move. Colfax, for example. We cleaned up the whole Colfax area and put the trash mountain on the corner of Colfax and Arden. Not once the trash people come get the trash there. Not once. I made several calls to see if they'd come get the stuff. No, come get the trash. And that's why it keeps building up over there in Arden and Colfax. So that's why we have a problem with trash and everything over there. And I've been out here every day with you guys, helping the homeless, and I just don't understand why you guys don't buy land and put homes there or work with sex tape for low-income housing, get more low, more low-income housing built. Because all you guys are doing is prolonging, putting a Band-Aid on a sore. Well, it needs to be fixed, pretty much. That's all I got to say.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, I have no more speakers.
Okay, let's turn it over. Thank you. Let's turn it over to the council. Councilmember Valenzuela, then Vang, Harris, and La Loa, and I have some comments. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, staff, for that. I want to reiterate my request from last month that we post these slides somewhere public, and I don't know if we can create a section maybe on that homelessness general website. I was trying to find the slides from last month and couldn't because I think you did a phenomenal job, as the mayor mentioned, of pulling together a lot of information and showing just how much money has been spent and just how much work has been done. And and so I just want to make sure that we can show that to our constituents when they email to say, hey, what's going on with this comprehensive sighting plan? And then my other part is really just a kudos to you all, because I think what we're seeing here is just the surface of a lot of work that's happening underneath the surface, because I know I've at least sent staff probably half a dozen sites outside of what was listed here that they've looked into, that they've researched and said, hey, that won't work for this reason, or hey, we've got this ownership issue or whatever issue that caused it to not get elevated to the next step. And so I know that what we saw here tonight is just a fraction of what you've done. And I just want to take a moment to reflect that. You all have moved mountains in in the last six months. And what I'm seeing here makes me really proud of the city team and how hard you've worked and how much money you've put forward from any other priority. I'm really proud as a city that we've put not much of our ARPA money towards homelessness, that we put that much of our grant money forward and just really want to commend you for taking a significant amount of resources and realizing so many beds. I know you are not leaving any rock unturned in that, you know, what we're seeing here may end up being the culmination of how much we can do within the city limits. And and I just know that because I know how hard you've all been working to try to explore every site we've brought to you and and to really be creative with the funding, with the structure, with looking into it. And so I just want to just take a moment to thank the city team for for all of that work and and knowing that really where we're at today feels like, how do we stabilize where we are? Because what we're carrying is, yes, all of this grant funding, we're anticipating, we think we can cover the costs. You know, I know if if, you know, we might need a lot more than than five million a year in general fund to kind of keep it going beyond that. And so I just want to reflect the commitment you've all made and how much you've done, and there is a lot more work to do. But I really do think the city has has pulled way beyond your weight. And and I just want to say that. And thank you, Howard, and and to the team for just all that you've done to to realize and get us to to this point as as far as you've had. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Valenzuela. And, you know, the tip of the spear here is Bridget Dean, and unfortunately, she's not here tonight. Her daughter's in labor, so she's out doing.
Oh, my gosh, congratulations to Bridget. I hope we all text her good thoughts for the family. But yeah, I appreciate that. And I just want to put this in context as well, because I think, and sorry, Howard, I know you were going to go on and gush about your team as well, but I'm just to put it in additional context. You know, I was looking up because we all get talked to a lot about things like Haven for Hope, right? And so to put it into context, because I know some folks look at thirty-three million a year just to maintain our current operations and they're like, oh, my gosh, that's a ton of money. Haven for Hope costs a hundred million dollars just to construct, right? And so I think it's important that we be super realistic about how much this will cost, what the city can realistically take on with with our budget, knowing that a lot of the money we put forward was one-time money. And I just really want to thank you for taking that risk because I'm sure that made you all a little anxious. And it's not something that our city team normally does that frequently. So, yeah, sorry, Howard, I know I interjected, but I forgot to insert that. I was researching that today because I'm like, how much did that cost? I'm like, wow, a hundred million dollars. That seems like a lot. I know it was all privately fundraised, which is great for San Antonio. But, you know, I just think it's important that we be realistic in our scale expectations. And I think my experience with your team has really exceeded my expectations and from in terms of exploring sites in my district. So just wanted to say that.
No, I appreciate that. There is an army of staff behind the people who presented tonight. But, you know, Ryan Moore, Danielle, Nick, as I mentioned, Bridget, Chris Conlon, Laney Milstein, the the whole budget and finance team have been cranking really hard to to make sure that come July one, we're not shutting down a single bed. Because of the vote the council took last week on the ordinance, we've redoubled our efforts. And yes, that means that we're going to have to plug holes that are coming in the five-year forecast. We will talk about that as part of the budget, but for now, that's the first priority. So I just want to say thanks to my team and they've been going hard, really hard. So I appreciate the acknowledgement, Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you. Councilmember Vang.
Thanks, Mayor. I just first, I have several comments and questions. First, I want to take this time to thank Ryan and Danielle just for your presentation. I'd like to also echo Councilmember Valenzuela on this, and I know that staff is doing everything they can to really move mountains within our capacity to address the crisis that we have on our streets. So I do have several questions and comments. The first is on a site that's not listed that I didn't see listed on the on the presentation, and the second is on the hundred-two acre. So I'll start with the first site that was not on the list that I I wanted to bring attention to. And that site is the Franklin Light Rail Station. My understanding is that the RT board, I don't sit on the RT board, but my understanding is that the RT board did vote to move to move to approve this site as the potential a safe parking several months ago. And I know that over the past months, my staff has worked incredibly hard and working on the ground with members of the Deerfield Mesa Grande Neighborhood Association to really discuss their ideas and their concerns around safe parking at the Franklin Light Rail Station. I know that Councilmember Jennings have have had also previous conversation with this community as well since he represented this community, although according to our past conversation, and I guess we both kind of present this community, represent this community now. But I do want to bring this site to the forefront because we've been working on this. There's been a lot of conversation at the RT board meetings and in the community. I I know that my staff right now is spending their time working with the Community Steering Committee of residents to ensure that we have a model policy template as we move forward. And at this moment, we are actually co-creating that good neighbor policy. And I think what we need now is really just an action and a commitment from this council to implement the one-year pilot's safe parking at Franklin Light Rail Station. And that that like that safe parking is aligned with their good neighbor policy. And so my question right now, because I I've heard that there's several, I've heard several concerns why we haven't been able to move quickly on safe parking on this site and and with the Roseville one. And so I do have some questions regarding Roseville and Franklin Light Rail Station. So the first is that, you know, I've heard a lot of conversation around the lack of funding to really stand up safe parking. And I just wanted to ask, and I do appreciate Danielle sharing kind of the breakdown of each site and wanted to just ask, you know, do we have funding for both site to have it stand up and running for Roseville and Franklin?
The short answer is no, and that's why we ended up with the shorter work plan sites. However, there are things that are happening with the Roseville roadside, for instance, that could cause it to be delayed, given this tri-party agreement and the FHWA and FTA, and there's you know, a whole bunch of acronyms that we need to get people involved. An option absolutely could be if the Franklin Light Rail Station was the preferred site, that we could swap the two. You know, because we're still trying to work through this agreement that was heard, I believe, at the RT board last night. I haven't watched it yet, but I heard there were some questions going back and forth about what we can and can't do. And as I understand it, the the general manager had authority to move forward with one, if not both sites. But on our end, it really is a function of, okay, so what do we want to focus on so that this thirty-three million dollars going forward doesn't continue to grow without first identifying how we're going to fill those funding gaps and not standing up things so that we have to shut them down? I mean, that's not a short answer, but that's the answer at this point.
Thanks, Howard. So you're saying that we can only do either or, we can't do both?
That that's correct. That's correct. I mean, we we could, you know, there's others on the work plan that Ryan covered earlier that if they do not come to fruition, we can repurpose those funds as well to go look at other sites within the Conference of Siting Plan.
Yeah.
But or if this council decides they want to swap out a priority, they can, they can do that as well.
Thanks, Howard. I would actually want to make sure that both site is on the table because I think geography absolutely matters. I think I also want to point out that this council voted for an initiative last week to scale up to sixty percent. And the fact that we don't have an initiative right now, we still can't scale up because you're telling me that we can only do either or. I just want to be able to point that out to the council as well, that this is also a challenge that we'll have if the voters approve the ballot initiative, right? And I just want to be able to share that, put that on the table as well. Yes.
The customer, I'm sorry to interrupt. I just want to put a finer point on that last comment because that is, in fact, why we have a provision within the ordinance that got approved last week that says that should we have resources available, we will scale up to the sixty percent. And that includes resources from the county, state, and the federal government. Absent that funding, those funding mechanisms that we will be limited to a maximum of five million dollars per year based on the net general funds at year-end. So, but it's a great point. I mean, if if we don't have funding, there's no way we can meet that obligation. And and our obligation is limited to that, up to five million dollars. But I appreciate you bringing that up.
Thanks, Howard.
Mike, do you mind if I just make one point on this while you're on this subject?
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm sorry for interrupting, Councilmember Vang.
No, you're good. I and I I don't want for it to be either or because I do think geography matters. That's really important. I know there's been a lot of work on the Roseville site. There has also been work on the Franklin as well, and I want to make sure that both of that is on the table. Because what I don't want happening is that folks are saying, well, let's do Franklin, not Roseville. And I think given all the hard work around Roseville, we have to ensure that both sites are on the table. So I'll have Councilmember Chenere comment because I know he wanted to speak.
Very, very quickly, I I think it would be very helpful to kind of have a two-site side-by-side between Roseville and and Franklin. How many, how much will it cost? How many cars or vehicles can we get on there? What's the timing to do it so that we can kind of look at that information and then talk about sequencing? I have no doubt that at some point we will have the funds, but what can we do quickest to get up and running? What's the community best at? So things like that. So that would be a request for the city manager so that we could look at those two sites and make a informed decision about what should come first and what what can we do more quickly?
Thank you. Pretty quickly.
Yeah, thank you, Mike.
Thanks, Jay. No, Jay, I appreciate.
Hey, Jay, can I just make sure that they add to that? What are the barriers
Sure.
currently in place for both of those sites? So we can see side-by-side and the timeline in order to be able to get those sites up and and running.
Absolutely, absolutely. All information we need to make a good decision.
We will include that.
Thanks, Jay. Appreciate that. Thanks, Jay. Appreciate that. I was going to make that request to you, but I really appreciate you pointing that out. Yeah, I think that information will be really helpful, Howard, so that council can provide direction on how we want to move forward. But again, you know, I would like to ensure that we have both side on the table. I think Jay is right. If money does come, we just want to make sure that that we're ready to go, right? And that we know what we're addressing. The second piece I just want to also just point out, and this is still regarding safe parking for Roseville and Franklin, is that, you know, it's been shared by, shared to me by by Henry and his staff in in a conversation that I had that, you know, they haven't been able to move forward, even though RT has, the RT board has voted because they have mentioned to me that the city cannot enforce in the safety zones at the Light Rail Station. So Howard, I just want to ask you directly, is this true? You know, can the city, you know, enforce in the safety zones for the for the safe parking?
So, you know, I see our city attorney chimed in, but the the short answer is yes, to the extent permissible by the law. And and so I I don't want to parse words here, but we do, we've created, and Chris Conlon's jumped on to, he's been part of these calls. Within the safety zones around all of our sites, we have the ability to enforce. But it's it's more complicated than that because we have overlapping like critical infrastructure. And so there's the difference between, you know, being able to maintain an encampment and actually moving people. Chris, you were in in that conversation. Do you want to elaborate on the conversation we had with RT and on this? And and what our position has been and continues to be?
Absolutely. So, Councilmember, the city has been talking about this with RT all the way since last September. We've been very consistent in our language to them since the beginning. And that is that we can provide a public safety zone as we have done around Meadowview and around the WX, around Roseville. This is a very discreet zone. It's something defined by our city attorneys. It is for the protection of the people inside of the shelter. That's very important to understand. Staff at RT has a different perspective. They believe that it's sort of like a denial zone, that if you are within this, that we can do things that we could not otherwise do in the law. We have been very clear that all that allows us to do is do enhanced enforcement of the law, of what law is currently on the books, and that includes things like nuisance, like urination, defecation, people that are illicitly providing food to the people inside of the shelter, people who are occupying critical infrastructure, like the Roseville RT Station. We are allowed to use enhanced enforcement within that particular zone. It does not allow us to deny or to to override things like Boise Martin. If somebody is solely camping in an area that's not critical infrastructure, and they are only camping and they're not violating other, any other law, it does not allow us to remove them. And that has been a sticking point between us and RT. RT has the authority, because their stations are critical infrastructure, to remove people who are camping at their stations. We don't have that leeway on city streets and in other locations unless it's critical infrastructure or they're in violation of some other law. And we've been clear on that since the first lease was presented to us on the fifteenth of September, all the way through the latest versions of the lease.
And I'm going to ask our city attorney to chime in and make sure that we're not missing anything here.
Yep. Thank you, Howard.
Well, I think the the to add on, the simplest answer is RT has asked the city to essentially guarantee that we will remove any encampments. And as this council knows, you you're very well versed in what the city can and can't do as far as encampments, that all we have asked is to insert the words as as allowed by law. And so that way, we can follow the law and not just clear encampments because we're obligated to under a lease. And so I think that that's the negotiation sticking point right now. And the city's been pretty clear that we will do that as long as we can, as as long as we will follow all applicable law. And I think that's a very reasonable request.
Well, can I just butt in here just for a second on this RT point? I mean, I I think RT is sort of sending a message, I I, at least the way that I hear it, that I I don't feel a sense of urgency from regional transit, and I love RT. I mean, you know, I'm a big fan, big supporter, love Henry Lee. I think they don't want to do this. And I think in many ways, they're sending that message loud and clear. And and that's problematic to me on many levels. It it assume, you know, for example, it it sort of assumes that regional transit is not affected by homelessness. That that's one of the like biggest complaints we, you you know, that we hear of. I mean, in terms of, well, it's one of the complaints we hear of in terms of unsheltered people riding the rails and all this. And it's it it's it's definitely problematic because they should be an active part of the solution. I'm sorry, I asked Henry many months ago when we could expect approval for this. And I'm sorry, it's going on eight months now. And and I hear all the goings on, but both behind the scenes and what goes on publicly. We need to be part of the solution. You've got massive amounts of space. And what we're spending, by the way, two point seven seven eight million dollars on Colfax, and I know for Sean LaLowe is trying to get relief from all the 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 car camping in his district, two point seven seven eight on Colfax Road to basically allow thirty cars. While, by the way, we have to move a hundred cars in order to accommodate that. We can't get moving on Roseville Road. We should be doing both Roseville Road and Franklin. And our team maybe should figure out a way to help contribute to that financially. I mean, it's ridiculous. No, nobody is on their own island here. We're we're all part of this problem here. And we bend over backwards trying to help build the system and will continue to. But I'm tired of this. I want to hear when one of, one or both of these is going to open. And how do we, and and if the the law is the law, RT, we can enforce what we can enforce, but you don't think that the problem is existing and growing and persisting in and around your light rail stations, our light rail stations? Come on, let's get real. Say yes to both sites simultaneously, and let's provide some relief for Roseville Road, which is one of our biggest car problems. I I I'm tired of this. It's too much, too much finger pointing. And 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 on this one, I I I back my city because all we're looking for is, all we're looking for is the relief here. And there seems to be too many reasons why we can't attain it. In the meantime, the business communities continue to complain and suffer and we've got to wait for a ballot measure and, you know, all that in order to show people that we can actually provide real relief in in impacted areas.
You know, thank you, Mayor. I I know that Councilmember Valenzuela and Councilmember Chenere are calling for a meeting for us all to get together and, you know, just square up on on what this looks like because we are, we are more than willing to move forward, and we have been.
Yeah.
I think we just need to clear the decks here and get going.
Sites.
Thanks, Ma, thanks, Mayor, for your passionate plea. Can I continue?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. No, totally cool. Yeah, it's it's okay. Yeah, I, no, I absolutely agree with you. I think, you know, the RT board has voted to approve the sites moving forward. I think right now is just the implementation, and there seem to be some slow walking happening. I think on all, on all parties, I'm just going to put it out there, right? And we all know that there's an urgent need right now. We get calls regarding families that are living just in their cars, and we have to do everything to ensure that there's safe parking, that there's, you know, temporary and permanent housing. So everyone's doing everything that they can, but I I'm just trying to think through what are the challenges right now that I'm hearing from folks, from staff, from both end, and just wanting to make sure that that we usher, we move move things along. And Howard, really thrilled to hear that, you know, we have that, that staff has that commitment to to implement and really hoping through that meeting, Jay and Councilmember Valenzuela, that we're able to find a resolution so that we can get moving on both of those sites. So my last comment is really on the Hundred Two Acres. I just want to share with my colleagues and with the public is that we are in the midst of several community listening workshops and sessions to discuss the use of the Hundred Two Acres. You know, I have committed to to my community in South Sacramento that we will do these sessions before any decision is made on this site. I I truly believe that we owe this to our entire community and our unhoused neighbors to ensure that this isn't a top down approach and something the council just wants to do. We have to make sure that we move, we move with the speed of trust. And that also make, that means that we have to make sure that we bring the community along with us. And so to make sure that everyone does have an opportunity to to have their voice heard. You know, my team has scheduled seven community listening session for the upcoming months, month and a half, which will allow us as a city to listen to what the community needs. We did complete our first session that was actually yesterday, and we have six, six more remaining. And I like to encourage a community members who are watching this to really sign up for the remaining six sessions. We have three neighborhood community workshops that is centered around three neighborhoods that are surrounding the Hundred and Two Acres. That's at the Meadowview Community, the Detroit Community, and the southern side of the Hundred Two Acres, which is the Deerfield Mesa Grande and Valley High. We have one just targeted to our young people because we know that if we're not intentional about holding space for our young people, they won't show up to these listening session. And so that one is happening on Monday as well, really encouraging all our youth and our youth advocates to make sure that that they're, that they're, that they're there so that we could really hear from them in terms of their hopes and dreams of how we could utilize this Hundred Two Acres. And then one for our our seniors as well. Seniors have reached out to me. I want to make sure that we hear from them. And lastly, also farm on our our unhoused neighbors and our advocates. And so I do want to share the website. It is at heartandhustle.org backslash listen. That's heartandhustle.org backslash listen, and really encouraging the public to participate and engage so that we can have a thorough and meaningful way to ensure that we provide feedback on this, on this property. That's it, Mayor. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak.
Of course. Thank you. Thank you for tolerating all the interruptions. Councilmember. All right, Councilmember Harris.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Feel free to interrupt me too if I say anything that ruffles your feathers.
Well, never.
So I've got a few questions. First, first for Susanna. You know, Rich Desmond has talked to County Council, and I have talked to Susanna about the idea of a true defensible space around homeless installations, meaning that we could enforce against any camping within a certain radius of the places where we make very substantial investments to serve the homeless. Look, we know that at Alhambra X, people come into the shelter, get a shower and food, and then go out and hang with their neighbors and tents and and get high. This is a given. There are problems that arrive, that arise when campers camp immediately adjacent our shelter space. We can't deny that. And so I have asked Susanna, is there any way with Martin v. Boise that we could create a defensible perimeter to do more than Mr. Conlon said, to just enforce against unlawful activities, defecation, you know, nuisance problems, et cetera? But can we actually prevent campers from camping close to our installation so that they can truly be effective? Susanna, can, I know you've talked to Lisa Travis. What is the upshot of that conversation?
Well, not only have I talked to County Council, but I've talked to my counterparts across the country, especially those affected by the Ninth Circuit decision in Martin v. Boise. Is actually, as Mr. Conlon described, I mean, a a defensible space, a security zone, a buffer zone, a good neighbor zone. It's intended to protect the shelter and ensure its success and also create the ability for the neighborhood adjacent uses to be to 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 continue to function. And honestly, it was a policy decision of this council when you opened up Meadowview to ensure that the neighborhood surrounding the facilities would eventually be in support of it because of the fact that they were working cohesively together. And so the the code sections that currently are in our city code, you know, defecation, urination, blocking public sidewalks, blocking public streets, all of that would be, as Mr. Conlon said, strictly enforced or enhanced enforcement, depending on resources. Camping around that area that was so designated also is a city code, unlawful camping would not be allowed there. What we have been resisting in the RT draft is a requirement that the city must remove encampments because there could very well be a circumstance where the city has actually could not legally remove it. And so all we have asked for is to insert the words, to the extent allowed by law. My conversations with County Council, I know at one point they were looking at creating a very large zone. I think that's when you asked me to look into it, like a thousand feet. Based on what LA was looking to do, the City of Los Angeles has not quite done that yet. Everybody, certainly in my world, is studying the legality of the of the amount of space you can actually establish. I I I hope that answers your question.
It does mostly, but not completely. You know, the fact of the matter is, at least I have certainly discerned with my own eyes and experience that if we allow camping immediately adjacent, our shelter spaces, they become less effective. Problems definitely pop up. And at some point, somebody is going to test Martin v. Boise in this regard. It has to happen. We can wait for LA and let them be the test case. But the fact of the matter is that the amount of money that we're spending on the shelter spaces is enormous. I, you know, certainly RT would ask for some guarantees about what enforcement could be done. And, you know, I I get your workaround to say within the extent of the law. It still doesn't hit the sweet spot in terms of making these areas truly effective. You know, there are specific problems around Roseville Road. I have to tell you, when we first, when I first looked at that space with Bridget Dean, we thought that we could park three hundred cars there. Then it got whittled down to two hundred. Then it got whittled down to seventy five. And now it's down to sixty ish. This is very problematic because the dollars haven't gone down commensurately to stand up these spaces. And the the other issue raised at RT last night was that the city, according to Henry, did, would not agree to having security twenty four seven at Roseville Road. And if I heard correctly, we do that at Miller Park. So can you explain to me what is happening with that particular negotiation around the city providing security?
I can chime in there if that's.
Yeah, please, go ahead, Chris.
Sure, I'm the last one to commented on it. The city has agreed to security. What RT asked us to do was to pay them so that they could utilize their private security, and that's for the external area. What RT demanded the city do, and we have not agreed to do, is to put a private security guard within the safe parking area. We don't do that because the operator does security. We have found that when we operate these, if we put a uniformed armed guard in there, it triggers some of the people that are inside. It's much better to use clinicians, social workers, and mental health practitioners to provide security in there. If there is a problem, they can call and get either SACPD or RT has asked us to use their police force to help provide security. So we have absolutely agreed to twenty four seven security. The only sticking point for us was that we would not utilize their private security or end up a armed private security guard within our safe ground area, but we would pay them to do security in the external area and in the public safety zone.
Okay, thank you for that clarification, Chris. My next question is about Colfax. You know, I know that some of our staff, and I agree with them, think that the amount of money invested in thirty parking spaces is absolutely extraordinary at Colfax. And I think that we should really look at this closely. It's looking like it will be about sixty eight thousand dollars per car per year to stand it up and to service it. If that's the case, this is really not a good bang for the buck. So, city manager, you know, I appreciate the 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 report tonight. Last time you came, we talked a little bit more about the cost per shelter space in each location. And I brought it up last time, that Colfax really looked extraordinarily expensive, whereas North Fifth was the best bang for the buck in terms of the amount of investment and the utility of the space. So I would really like to further this discussion about whether Colfax is truly a worthwhile investment. It's down to thirty cars. We originally envisioned it to be seventy five spaces, which would actually make a difference in Mr. LaLowe's district, but thirty cars? You just said that we're going to have to move ninety out to put thirty cars there. In Mr. Lalois district, but thirty cars, you just said that we're gonna have to move ninety out to put thirty cars there. It's not a net gain, it's not really a win, I think that we really need to sharpen our pencil and look at that space. Another thing that came up briefly was the Auburn space, the old powerhouse science center. It is set up to be able to handle a lot of different aspects of homelessness. It could be triage, it could be car camping, it could be tent. Uh, and yet we're not fully utilizing that space, even with the substantial investment in it. I think we need to reopen that conversation and look at it. And lastly, city manager, I have to ask you this question. When we bought the hundred and two acres in South Sacramento, what was the impetus to buy it? Why did the city of Sacramento purchase that acreage?
Well, there are a couple of reasons here, I, I mean, we were looking for all available parcels to help address, uh, space needs to. Uh, to mitigate impacts of homelessness, uh, the real answer though is Councilman Vang. Uh, and, and the mayor called and said, hey, there, here's an opportunity for us to get our hands on a pretty significant piece of acreage here. Uh, to do not only, uh, you know, potential sheltering, but affordable housing, uh, in the longer term. Uh, and so that, that's, that's how it came to be and we, you know, went through, jumped through a whole bunch of hoops in a very short timeframe. And here we are with, uh, with a hundred and two acres.
Essentially though, the, the, the purpose of buying that acreage was to help us solve the homeless conundrum, is that a fair statement?
That's fair, and I'll, I'll let Councilman Vang jump in as well because she, she and I talked, uh, over the weekend when, uh, when that parcel, um, came to the forefront.
So, well, the point I'm trying to drive at, yes, it would be great to put housing there. It would be wonderful to get housing for the homeless in whatever form that took. But we also envisioned it, I believe, at the outset to, to be able to use it for sheltering as well. I, I appreciate Councilmember Vang, it's in her district and of course she has to reach out to the community. Jay and I have reached out to our various communities for years now. And, you know, it's, it's usually quite a slog. That is a very big piece of property and it can serve many, many uses. And, uh, you know, Councilmember Vang, I appreciate the efforts you're, you're taking to reach out to the community. And I look forward to the results of those conversations, the fact remains that we do have opportunity. To do an awful lot there, and I think we need to move forward with it rather, rather quickly. As far as the Franklin, uh, RT site, it has great potential, Jay has worked on this thing for years. He's already done the slog of doing the community outreach and of course it was largely not copacetic. To doing homeless installation there. Um, but it is a good opportunity site, it's probably a little easier to get across the finish line than Roseville Road. And again, you know, Roseville because the number of spaces has.
Oh, Jeff, Jeff, just really to be clear, I worked on Florin, not Franklin.
Oh, okay, sorry, sorry, Jay.
That's all.
But similar cir- circumstances, nonetheless, uh, it's, it's a good opportunity site. Thank you for the clarification, Jay. You know, we have to use all of our available opportunity sites, I think it does include the Auburn Hub as it was called. Colfax, I think we need to look at a little more closely, we're obviously gonna have to have a lot of conversations about the hundred acres. The potential building downtown, uh, you, you know, we've got a lot of great pieces in place. To get more energetic and certainly if the ordinance passes by the voters in fall. We are going to have to get very energetic about a lot of these spaces. And, uh, maybe a little bit more realistic about what we're willing to put in each space. I'll leave it at that, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Harris, Councilmember Laloie.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, um, I, I mean, first and foremost, uh, uh, my, my. Thank you to all the city staff, um, um, you know, the ones that we see every week on, on Zoom. And obviously the many that work, um, uh, behind the cameras to make, uh, that, that, that worked so hard. To make this, uh, comprehensive plan somewhat into a reality. Um, Mr. Mayor, um, I, I, I think, um, I, I feel your frustration.
And it's not new.
Um, and. I myself have gone to the RT, um, uh, station, um, multiple times. Have had a meeting with our DCR team there, then RT wanted to meet there, so I said, not a problem. We went there and met, had probably seven to eight, uh, different community meetings. Um, had a meeting between. Um, RT, city and my office. And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, Councilmember Shinier, I think you were also present in that, uh, meeting where it was RT and city. And pretty much in that meeting, what I took away from it is that. RT has agreed to everything, everything is fine, that we only need to get an okay from Caltrans. Which then I reached out to you saying, could you please see if we can, we can expedite this? So, even though the Roseville Road RT Station, um, is in my district. Um, today I'm finding out that that particular, uh, space. Has somehow completely got rearranged. And, um, Howard, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't wanna, uh, uh, miss, uh, um, speak here. Initially, we, we designated a certain part of that parking lot to completely. Um, bring the entire Roseville encampment from under the bridge into that parking lot. I just don't know when was it changed to exclusively vehicles and only fifty? Like, um, I know that our city staff have been working very diligently on this. So when, when did, who changed the numbers, I guess that's.
Well, it, it happened, uh, over time, it was, uh, an iteration, maybe Ryan Moore, you can jump on board here, but it started with a larger number. It got whittled down, and then there's some more conversation, then it got whittled down some more. And pretty soon the space we looked at is what you see today.
Yeah.
Uh, Ryan, can you fill in the blanks here for us?
Sure, so the site that we are looking at right now that we have in the slide I showed earlier is about an acre. We had evaluated the possibility of extending it farther to the west up on the bridge. Um, that was not supported by really Caltrans or RT, and I frankly, I think nor us. There, there were a lot of safety concerns with having folks, um, up on the bridge, um, over traffic. There are concerns with people dropping things onto Roseville Road and or onto the UPR heavy rail line. Farther to the east underneath the Caltrans structure, uh, the California Streets and Highways Code actually does not permit us to do any. Homeless operations anywhere of twenty, there's a twenty feet buffer zone from the footprint of the freeway structures. This is the same thing we saw with the WX bridges downtown. So, the acre that we're left with now is the same footprint we've really been looking at since January. Um, I, I know we've had to shrink a little bit in order to fit some admin space in there for our operator. Also some storage space for the guests and also a small amount of space for kennels for, uh, a lot of the pets that are out there. So, the, the acre though is, is really the, the, the piece that we've been working with since, since January.
Thank you, um, and I, I know that, uh, Bridget is not on tonight. But based on this acre that as of right now we have, unless we hear something else. Then your office has to reorganize and chop things down. Do you think it's even possible to? Move the Rose, Roseville encampment from underneath, but I, on the street to the, to the Roseville, um, RT parking lot? Is that even possible?
Um, if, if you don't mind, uh, Councilmember Laloie, I think I can answer that probably a little bit better, yeah, you're right, uh, we don't have Bridget here tonight. Um, since we started this discussion, we have been very clear with everybody that we cannot force people from underneath the Roseville. From the Roseville site specifically to this one, that we will offer it. And that it would provide us possi- the possibility that if we offer it and they don't move. And then we did enhanced enforcement on the Roseville Road, that that would be a way that we could potentially clear some of those encampments. Um, that was an option that was in our book, we cannot mandate that somebody leaves Roseville Road and goes into this encampment. That would be a, uh, that's like a prison, we can't do that. Um, we can offer it to them, and then if they refuse, uh, and then we go on Roseville and we cite them for the violations that those vehicles are in. Parking for an excess of seventy-two hours, hazmat leakage, all of those various other things we have done in your district for vehicles that are illegal. Um, it would put the city in a far better position to clear that area. So that is what we've been doing, as far as it being for vehicles or for tents. A lot of that quite honestly is negotiations back and forth with RT on what they were willing to allow and what they were willing not to allow. And that has been part of this three-party agreement discussions going back and forth. And as Ryan said, part and parcel of that also was as we were looking at requirements and how this thing was shaping up. Like the latest one is, none of the vehicles can have propane in it. Well, if they don't have propane in it, we have to have a little bit better facilities for people. So if it's cold and wet and they're in a freezing car, they've got a place to go, so that required more admin facilities. So it's been part of sort of the negotiations back on forth on what we can do there and what we can do for the ba- for the clients to make sure that they're safe and protected.
So is it safe to say that as of right now, if we get the green light on the Roseville Road, technically. We might take, let's say fifty cars, but that doesn't, then we're done, that doesn't do anything for, you know, people that are. In that encampment, uh, in tents and things like that, e- even if they wanna move, then we just gotta tell them. Uh, sorry, that parking lot is full, you can't, you can't move.
It's various situational dependent, council member, and there are other options we can do. You know, the city still does have an inventory of campers, so there's a potential that if somebody would accept it, we could use one of our campers there. And offer them a camper instead of a tent, uh, at this location, we've discussed some of that. Um, you know, all of these things are, are quite honestly negotiating back and forth with the, with the client population that's out there. We know that some people refuse, we know that some people are looking for other options, it's all back and forth. The, the problem that we've had is one that I, I believe the mayor has articulated several times that. We should have, and several other council members, that in order to be able to enforce, we should have some other options. And this is trying to create those other options for people.
Yeah, cuz my, my concern is that, the, the community in that encampment, it's much bigger than fifty cars. Right, so, I, I, in, in the beginning where we're talking about hundred seventy-five to two hundred vehicles. That, that was, you know, we could make a huge difference, and there are a lot of people in that Roseville encampment that they want out. Yeah, I mean, I, I understand what you're saying, uh, Chris, as far as we, we can touch and all that, I, I agree with you. But the fact also remains, in that same very encampment, same vulnerable group that are being taken advantage of. And they need help, so that's why I asked if we can, if we can just move cars and then we can't do anything for the, the individuals in these tents. That kind of, you know, all this hard work that the city put behind these sites, all the manpower, all the hours that we put in. And then come a year later, find out that what we had envisioned, uh, is merely chopped up. To something very minimal. By another organization, after the city and the city staff poured all their heart and all their hard work into it. And then on the eleventh hour, we, we get a, a, a surprise on this. So that's somewhat frustrating, if you ask me, I mean, I'm looking at, you know, individuals like Ryan, his team, Bridget Dean and her team. All that work, and then now we're coming and telling them, hey, appreciate you did all that work, but guess what? We don't need it, we can only put fifty cars, and this is somewhat, I think somewhat discouraging, um. Um, I, I, I don't know, Howard, do we, what's the next move? I mean, I know some of our colleagues are on the board, on the RT board. I know for a fact that last year, I, I was told on, on Zoom. That RT Board has approved this site based on the, those drawings that we had. And then somehow it got changed, and I, I'm finding out about it today, right now, this second. So. Do, I mean, now I really understand how you guys can be so frustrated. Because it's like, we take all these steps moving forward, fixing something. And then all of a sudden the marching orders have changed and we're coming back and we gotta start all over. And I, I, and I'm, hey, I like to apologize to you and your group for. Having you guys spend so much time, effort, and then finding out that, and, 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 and. A third party entity has changed their mind. So where, where do we go from here?
Let, let Howard answer the question, go ahead.
Well, so, so I think that when we first started off here, I can't recall, it was so far back. Whether it was, uh, the original operation was safe ground, which did not, uh, limit it just to vehicles. Uh, there was, like I said, several iterations that, uh, you know, discussions with the RT board, discussions with, uh, the general manager. It, uh, it became in, uh, a safe parking lot, it was more, uh, it was going to be acceptable to RT. And that expanded to some of the other locations within RT. Uh, what Ryan described is more kind of a, a physical limitation on how we choke it down. But if it's something that, uh, that you wanna explore and want us to explore with the RT board, to revert back to a different operation. That's not a safe parking lot, but in fact a safe ground to accommodate more people, uh, provide that direction, uh, this council. And we can go back and have those conversations and, but I will pause for a second and maybe hear from the. Uh, the council members who serve on the RT board to, to get their thoughts on how, from their perspective, it morphed into what it is today.
No, I appreciate it, uh, yeah, sure, I, I mean, I, I, I would love to find out what took place in the last four months.
If I could just chime in on that too, I think that some of the questions you're asking, Councilmember Laloie. Need to be answered in that meeting we're setting up with the RT team and the city team. Because I'm honestly not sure how some of these things changed, and, and I think that there's just been. And I will agree with the mayor that it sure doesn't seem like RT wants to do this, um, and that might be part of what's going on. But, um, I just wanna say that, I mean, we looped you into that email chain, so your office could be in that meeting and we can try to get to the bottom of what's happened.
And, and I appreciate it, um, and I guess my, a little bit of my frustration is, we did conduct that, that particular meeting. That you're, you're bringing to the table, which I, by the way, I really appreciate you getting everybody involved, but we had that meeting, we spent an, an hour in that meeting. We, we walked away, again, going back to.
I've been in a number of these meetings.
Yes, actually, you were in one of the meetings as well.
Four or five of them.
Yes, and in fact, I think it was during that meeting that, uh, Mr. Mayor, you said, you know what, I'm gonna call Caltrans myself. And, you know, cuz there was again frustration, but, um, I, 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 like. Howard, I, I, I don't know, you say, hey, tell us what you wanna do, as of right now, nothing, let's just wait for this meeting.
Well, let, let us go around and again, we'll come back to this, cuz I'm gonna, I'm gonna touch on this in a minute as well, but let's, let's.
Thank you for that.
And we'll come back to you, okay, uh, Vice Mayor Ashby.
Um, thanks Mayor, I, I don't think I need to be too, too long here on this, lots of folks with, uh, lots of comments. But I wanted to, fir- first of all, I wanna say something, um, in support of my Councilmember Vang. That, uh, first of all, I'm really glad we bought that piece of land, and I think Mayor and Councilmember Vang and City Manager Chan. Your decision to do that was wise for the city. But I think it's really important that, I know it's included here in the siting plan and that we're talking about it for purposes of some use here. But I just wanna support her because, well, first of all, I not, I won't be here next year. When many of the decisions are being made about that land, but I, I want everyone on this dais to remember. What she's facing down there. I went, I've been to lots of events with her, and there are so many needs, there's so, there's whole communities without parks. And very few resources, and I, I want, I know she's game, and I know Mayor's game for using part of it. Uh, for this strategy, I know that, I'm not, I'm not saying don't do that, I, I think that's the right thing to do, but in the long run. The long run now, that site. The long run now, that site. That site should be where District Eight gets to dream big and do really amazing things. And I just wanna. For as long as I'm sitting on this dice, I'm gonna keep bringing it up because I want it to just become routine. That we're committed to that end to supporting her in that goal. And if we use it for a while to help. You know, bridge a gap here, that's great. But we really owe it to District Eight to. Show up big for them. And I, I know you guys, I think the vast majority of you agree with that. Just asking you to remember, just really remember, plant that seed in your minds that. District Eight deserves something much bigger than some parking spots and stuff. And it's okay if we use it. I, I know we need to do it for a little bit. But in the long run, regional parks, amenities, soccer fields, art, community. Libraries, equity, food, all that stuff. And her community is gonna, needs to get to be the lead. Uh, I just wanted to say that one piece. I'm, I'm not saying take it out, but I am saying. It's, it shouldn't be the long-term solution to our problem here. Okay, that's it on that. And then, uh. Howard, I wanna direct my comment at you because I wanna be very grateful to staff and I am grateful to staff. We've done just this amazing work putting this plan together. But I feel like a broken record on one topic. So are you, are you here, Howard?
I am.
Okay, good. Um. If I see the siding plan one more time, leaving out the Home Key projects, I'm going to lose my mind. There are three Home Key projects and they are part of the siding plan and they have been part of the siding plan. And when we post the siding plan and we don't include the Home Key projects, you are leaving out. A site in Councilmember Vang's district and a site in Councilmember Valenzuela's district and a site in my district. And honestly, I think it's one of the best strategies too, because they're the only sites that include SHRA. Which is also probably why they're being left out and also include wraparound services to provide. Permanent housing and mental health services and we're addressing specific populations and. You've got a mayor over here fighting for every single room and you've left out, you know, three hundred. Plus units serving, you know, potentially thousands of people. Please include them. La Mancha is a twenty-two million dollar project with a hundred units. Vista Nueva is a forty-one million dollar project with a hundred and seventeen units. Central Stack, twenty-nine million with ninety-two units. Please, please, continue to list them. Funded, they, they have the resources. Yes, they need some ancillary funding here and there, but they're really important. To this whole siding plan and they are rooms that are going to count towards numbers if. The ballot initiative is successful, they need to be a part of the siding plan every time we talk about it. Please, please.
My apologies, Vice Mayor. We will include that in the presentation that we get posted. And Councilmember Valenzuela, we will link it, uh, to all your accounts so that you can forward it to your constituents as well, so that the PowerPoint. Is easy to find. We're, we're trying to get it on the jump page on, from DCR or the homeless microsite.
Thank you, City Manager. I know it's unintentional. I just.
Take, you know, take credit for the, all the things that we're actually doing. It's important. Council, Mayor Potem Gera, Councilmember Shanir. Um, Councilmember Valenzuela and I, I have a few, few comments. Go, go.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me just start where, uh, Vice Mayor, uh, Ashby left off and that is. Yes, on the Home Key, but don't forget that the Saint Johns and the Weave Home Key Projects also were part of that. Uh, City Manager, you know, we have the Saint John Square and also the project in, uh, in District Two. That were the Weave Projects, the first ones that when our motel, uh, a project fell through, those two were able to go forward and. I do wanna, with that, I'll, I'll go to the next thing. We'll just thank Danielle because she, I don't think she slept for three days getting those applications and. And, uh, you know, I appreciate that. Also wanna thank Danielle again on that, uh, great, uh, uh, way of, of breaking down. Exactly kind of where our, uh, our finances are for twenty twenty-three, at least to twenty twenty-three. And, uh, and therein lies the challenge of, of making sure that we're not only providing shelter, but. Uh, the, the needed services connected to, you know, uh, ensure that we have people on the, on the footing to. Wanted to get back into self-independence, but the, and, and at the very least into permanent support housing, but. Uh, but most importantly, to get back into, uh, you know, a, a sense of self-independence. So, um, I do wanna, uh, uh, thank that. And I, you know, we don't have to do it right now, but I, uh, you know, Danielle, I do wanna talk about, okay, uh, you know, getting ahead of. Where do we see the opportunities, uh, in the future? How do we, uh, what are the potential pots, whether they be state or federal? Uh, and also what recommendations we can be proposing to our, um. Our delegations. I know our, uh, our cap, cap delegations moving this week. I'm not going this, this year to DC. I'm avoiding. Plane, but, uh, but I know that, that, uh, one of the key things that we're asking for is flexibility so that we can use some of the. Emergency vouchers for, um, assistance for folks. So, um, I, I, I wanna, I wanna. As part of the home of siding plan and we're looking at this funding structure, uh, uh, next time we come, can you come back with? Okay, where are the opportunities where we should be engaging a little more aggressively, particularly since. The next time you come back in May will be knee-deep in also on the state, uh, budget cycle as well. So. Uh, all that to say, uh, appreciate that work. I can't also, um, uh, say enough to thank you to Councilmember Vang for her. You know, quick went there, you know, we were looking at a, at a site in our, um, council district. Unfortunately, the property owner decided to go a different direction, but a nine-acre site that. Came out to almost the same amount as this one hundred acre site. So it was, uh, a very, uh, you know, when we're talking about. Bank for a buck to try to be able to find opportunities, um, you know, as, uh, uh. Uh, as one said, you know, they're not making any more of land, so buy it up. Uh, so I do wanna thank Councilmember Vang and I look forward to joining her in some of her community conversations to hear specifically about. You know, what are the dreams and aspirations and how, um, uh, how we can address that. Uh, earlier this morning, I met with the Power and Alliance City Manager and some of the concerns they, they brought up also was. They didn't want to see District Eight, you know, in that area be, you know, the, the, the recipient of all of. Uh, the, uh, you know, car, uh, camping or the RVs. Uh, that are in their area. And so the, still there's interest in District Six. Of how we find a, another location and Colfax is taking a long time. But there's a significant amount of people who are looking for respite in the southeast area and the industrial area. And so. Any, I know we've got these priority sites, but we've gotta figure out also how we address the number of people who are living in RVs. Uh, in the industrial area. So, uh, Mr. Chan, I, I don't know, I know we had a person from your team that was. A member of the board and now she moved on to a great promotion for the city of Roseville, but. Uh, we also need to have, I think, a person from our team joining the board and so, so we can do this conversation. So. All that to say, thank you, Danielle. And, uh, I think that for, you know, the report that we have today on the progress we've made. And we know kind of where our, our growing demand is for twenty twenty-three. So thank you, Mr. City Manager. Don't forget to list, uh, Saint John Square, Weave as part of the Home Key Projects.
Will do, will do.
Councilmember Shanir.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, just a couple of points I wanna make and I, and. Pretty much agree with everything that, that my colleagues have said, um. You know, when I, when I think about this from a slightly different angle, but when I think about the capacity that we had two or three years ago as we were working on this. And the capacity that we have now, um, it's pretty remarkable. Increase and really wanna add my thanks to Ryan and his folks, Danielle and her folks and. You know, Mr. City Manager, I think you guys have done a, a tremendous job. Um, starting from zero, really. I mean, this was not something we were doing. We, I think we were funding some shelters, but for the most part. Um, you've taken on, uh, a whole new range of, of responsibilities. And so I wanna thank staff because I also completely understand that this is on top of the work that they've been doing. Every day, getting through the weeks and months of their own jobs. So, uh, I wanna make sure that we recognize that. Um, it's, it's been a tremendous amount. Um, so actually two, two other things. One is. Um, and, and I'm gonna give an example of this, um, and, uh, Howard and. Some of you others know this, we have one site, um, on Thirty Second, uh, uh, right by the freeway and. You know, we, we've had our code people out there. We've had our police and impact team out there. Caltrans has been out there. Um, the, the police department has been out there, um, but we can't seem to figure out. Who's who and who's what. I mean, and, and as I told you the other day, the latest that we heard Caltrans saying is it's not their property. This was after they had one of the, um, one of the mobile homes, not even an RV. There was a mobile home out there forever. Um, I, I think that there's a little bit, and, and I'm experiencing the same thing. In a, in a way, across the street from the X Street Shelter where we're trying to clean up an encampment. Um, and we've been talking to Cal, this is definitely Caltrans property and we've been talking to Caltrans now for months. Just to get it cleaned up and fulfill a commitment that we've, we've all made to the community on this. Um, I don't have the answer here, but I think we have to figure out a better way. To work with Caltrans and, and to make sure that we're coordinated among all of these pieces. Um. It's, you know, when, when the folks from Caltrans tell me. They don't know what's going on underneath the freeway at Broadway. Um, and we've actually walked it with other Caltrans personnel. Um, that's just, we, we can't work that way. Um, and everything takes longer. When Caltrans says that before they can do a cleanup, they have to do their own outreach when. VOA and, and DCR, um, have been doing outreach every day in the same area. We're, you know, we're all responsible to the same clientele, which is the public. We need to do a better job. And again, I don't know what the answer is to that. But we have to figure out a better way to coordinate our efforts. Um, cuz I think we're duplicating efforts, we're, we're wasting time and the time horizon. On some of this, um, you know, I get a call, I send it to Bridget. Not quite sure what happens after that. There, the feedback loop isn't as strong as it, it should be. So that I can at least tell my constituents when they're calling. On a daily basis saying, okay, I got more tents out here today. What, what are we doing about it? I have a decent answer cuz I don't feel like I have an answer that I can, that I, that I feel comfortable with even. So that's one request is how do we do a better job coordinating at the top, but so it also filters down. I know. Again, back to Caltrans, uh, DCR with Bridget and, and Caltrans and I think maybe, um. Chris Conlon have weekly meetings, but I don't know that that filters down to the Caltrans person that is in our meeting every week. When we talk about the Navigation Center. So one request for you is like, if we can figure out a better way to communicate and. Share some of these responsibilities that we're doing the work anyways.
I, I think it's, it's pretty tricky, uh, council member. Yeah, because we always try and work with the staff at the staff level. And at times when there's some frustrations about timelines and we, we elevate it and escalate it. Uh, sometimes that's not always the best, uh, approach because what ends up, what could end up happening. Is that, um, it gets prolonged because of kind of the, the chain of command. And so we're, we're trying to navigate that, uh, carefully so that we can affect the best outcome here. But I, I hear what you're saying because. We've experienced the same things.
Right. And, and you know, maybe some of it is on us and maybe I shouldn't be calling Caltrans. Because that's giving them a different message than what Bridget is telling them or what somebody else is telling them underneath a different freeway. I don't know, but it, it, how do we coordinate it better from our side? So like, here's the priority list. Here's what we want you to do for a second and third. Again, for me, we can't do everything. I get that. Uh, but at least I wanna have realistic answers when people call me. So that's, that's that piece. Um, the, the, the final thing I wanted to say is, um. I think that, you know, there, there's such a big piece of it, kind of. Tagging onto what I just said, but there's such a big piece of it, of how we talk to our constituents, how we talk to neighbors of all these shelters. And that's a place where I think we could be doing better, um, with our communities. Learning from each other and, uh, you know, we all work probably too much in silos. I'll speak for myself here. Where I think we could probably do a better job working with each other. And maybe there's some centralized way. That we're, we're working with our communities. Maybe it's all in that thing. I don't know. Um. But I, I don't feel, uh, there's two things. One is, again, I don't think we're as coordinated as we could be. But as important, I don't think we're getting the information out. I know we have a PIO working specifically on this. But when you look at, you know, what Ryan and, and Danielle have presented to us today. And everyone has said this and I totally agree, the amount of work is pretty amazing. I don't think people in the community know that. Um, and I think that's the cause of some of the frustration. Um, you know, not everybody is gonna be happy. I mean, I was getting emails today saying, thank you for clearing. Fair Oaks and Howe. And I was getting emails today saying, what are you doing clearing? Fair Oaks and Howe, where are you putting those people? So it's, it's, it's a tough one. Um, but I, I do think that we could take a step back and, and take a look at. How we get this information out. And probably a good example is when we did the work with RT, kind of turning RT around. And got some really good public information out and work with their staff and the training of their staff of how to do it. Uh, again, I think that's an area, not that we're not doing the work, but I think we could do it better. And, and that would be helpful to us and certainly helpful to the city for, when people recognize. The level of work, the level of resources we're putting into this and, and all of those things.
Thank you, uh, council member. I, I think you hit it on the head there. We, uh, what you're describing is kind of the, the growing pains of expanding DCR. And we just need to do a better job of communication, always. We can always do better.
And, and I don't, I don't want anyone to think that I don't think we're doing the work. And that our folks are, are working their butts off. There's no question in my mind, especially since this is all added responsibility. But I think we can do better for them as well.
Yeah, I, I think we just need to take credit for the things that we are doing. Yeah, um, and, and I hear you loud and clear.
Thank you. Appreciate the time.
Thank you.
That's for me, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Valenzuela again.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, I just wanted to quickly reemphasize the point on the Job Corps site cuz I've gotten several constituent emails saying, great. We got that site, um, we can, we can take care of the problem. And I just wanna put a finer point that nobody will tell you putting ten thousand people. On one parcel is okay or would work. And, and so I just want us to kind of take that out of our minds. As like that Job Corps site is a hundred acres. We're gonna put everybody there cuz I think it's just, it's just not possible. But. I do wanna relate to Jay's point and I appreciate the mind meld there around telling our story because. I also think that when we started the comprehensive siding plan process, that was already on top of all the stuff that was already there. Um, you know, cuz I got a lot of calls when it started that said, hey, what about downtown? And I'm like, we've got a lot in downtown, midtown. You've got LGBT centers, got housing. We've got, you know, Mercy's got sites, all of these sites that existed before. And so what I wanna do is really recognize. The frustration that's very real cuz I wanna balance telling our story of what we're doing with recognizing that people aren't seeing those results on the street. And part of it is because we're not addressing the root issue at play here. So I wanna tell the caller who called in and talked about housing. We should not be trying to shelter seniors, our people with jobs in our city that have income. They should be able to access affordable housing that meets their income needs, right? Part of what we're fighting up against is that we're needing to continue to expand sheltering. Because we're having this growing population of folks that should not be on the street because they have income. Um, they're eligible for services. They just can't get in. Like we, we have to continue to keep that whole story in focus so that people understand. When we say, yes, look at all of the shelter that we built, why is it that you might still be seeing those encampments in that area, right? Like we just, and what Jay was talking about when it comes to jurisdictions and Caltrans property, I gotta have that conversation probably a dozen times a day. Um, with constituents where I'm like, I can't make Caltrans do something on their property. Um, you know, like we have got to bring them to the table and really do. A really holistic job of talking about what we know we need to work on, what we are working on through the housing element, through the general plan. Some of the policy discussions that are going on around affordable housing because it is all connected. And I think that we need to just. Help the public understand cuz I get a lot of emails from folks who really wanna understand. Why is it that you're telling me that you've done this thing that's gonna help a hundred people and it feels like there's just more people i- in our community? Like what is the disconnect there? In part is because we're just talking about sheltering and we're just talking about emergency response. And we're not painting that whole picture. Of what we need our developers to start doing, what we need everybody to start doing if we're gonna have the whole solution here. Which is, includes frankly, affordable housing in addition to more residential services. Um. So I also just wanted to point out, and you're gonna get a little sick of me doing this over the next few months, and that's okay. I'm okay with that. Um, I just wanna point out that the limitation that we're hearing here tonight. Is that we don't control the sites that we need to get access to. Um, I hear a lot of people saying, what about Boys Ranch? What about Army Depot? What about this? What about that? We don't control these sites. Um, and what we heard us talk about tonight was about sites that other people control. And what we heard us talk about tonight was about sites that other people control, that we're trying to get them to let us use, and then they're slow walking us, or they're saying no, or they're putting additional requirements on. So I just want to point that out with a very fine point. And I also don't want us to lose what Howard said when it came to Roosevelt and Franklin Boulevard, which is, we don't have enough money to do both of those things. The issues here are the where and how are we going to pay for it? It's not about sense of urgency, because goodness knows, we all get, I know I get a, a whole bunch of emails every day, I know you all get those emails, I know we are moving as fast as we can. And I hope if nothing else, people who are watching this hearing hear that and understand that the barriers that we are coming across are not because our fantastic staff on top of their already full day jobs aren't trying everything they can to get these sites open, but it is other barriers that we are encountering. And people aim a lot at us, and that ballot measure that was voted on last week aims a lot on us and puts the responsibility on us, but we need these other entities to chip in, we need them to help us with funding, we need them to help us with sites, or else this is as far, I think, as we might go. And that makes me sad, because the need is so much greater, and, and I want us to do so much more. But in the end, I don't know about any huge other city sites that we're overlooking, I know we've all exhausted those lists, we've asked private owners, we've done everything we can to try to pave the path forward here. And so I just, I can't let this conversation in without just putting a finer point on, on that. The issue is land, and the issue is funding. And, and people need to recognize that despite what was said last week, we cannot do this alone as a city. So I just had to say that, Mayor, for the benefit of the people, thank you for the time.
I appreciate it, I think you're right. So it's a really good discussion, and, you know, I, I, I think we have to have the ability as adults and as public leaders, whether we're elected or appointed, to be able to tolerate multiple truths, to be able to say with gratitude that our city team is stretching beyond their normal, their normal jobs to help stand up 1,100 shelter beds over the course of, of the past five years, and to be grateful for that. And at the same time, to say that we're nowhere near where we need to be or where we need to get to, to address not only the human tragedies on our streets, but the great frustrations of people that we serve. You see, I know I come across as frustrated sometimes, but the truth of the matter is, is my frustration doesn't matter. It really doesn't. It's the public's frustration that matters, and it's the rightful frustration. And I want to give some credit to, the, the staff deserves a lot of credit, but I want to give some credit to my colleagues on the city council as well. You passed the comprehensive siding plan. You have made the discretionary decision to dedicate $41 million of the ARP money to housing and homelessness. And you've put general fund dollars towards affordable housing and homelessness. What people want, they want us to do everything we can in our power to overcome the barriers that are pretty obvious, including the barrier that, you know, we can't go at this alone. You know, fundamentally, our problem continues to be that it's the age old notion that in our community, by and large, people want the problem solved, but they don't want it solved anywhere near them. I mean, isn't that what the RT fight is about here? If there was ever a case to be made for all levels of government, beyond, including the city, but beyond the city, to be held legally accountable for better results, it's the story that was told tonight about the eight months of going back and forth on this Roseville Road site. You say we can't afford to do it all or do everything? How about the fact that because we cannot land the Roseville Road site, because I, I don't know, I want to hear from RT, and maybe they're going to approve this tomorrow, and they're going to implement this tomorrow, and we're going to, we're going to go. And maybe they'll say we'll start with 50 cars, and when we show that it's success, they'll be willing to expand it to 100, because the need out on Roseville Road in that corridor is much larger than 50, as Councilmember Luloy, as Councilmember Luloy pointed out. But until then, here are the choices we're being stuck with. Say we don't have enough money? We are spending almost $3 million to accommodate 30 vehicles at Colfax. I'm sorry, that's not a wise use of our money when we could be spending, if I have this number right from Danielle Foster's spreadsheet, $478,000 to put 50 cars on Roseville Road. What, what? You wonder why the public is frustrated here? So this is not a call out to our team tonight, but it, it's, it, it, it is, again, I think repeating what is self evident. We have to do better, but we can't do it alone. We desperately need our jurisdictional partners to demonstrate the same levels of urgency that, that we do here in the city, because we need much more capacity. And I, I don't want to relitigate last week, we already did that. And, you know, the old cliches or notion, perfection being the enemy, the good and all that business. I'm telling you, holding ourselves accountable, I hope, is a model for every jurisdiction in this state responsible for helping to make this problem better, also holding themselves accountable and legally accountable, and giving citizens the right to sue if we don't deliver timely on what the people want. I really hope tonight, nothing else comes out of this, that there is this meeting of the minds with RT and the city, and I'd be happy to involve myself again, as I did early on, and I thought it was all heading down the right path, but this needs to get done. We need at least 50 vehicles on Roseville Road. We need the Roseville Road Station, Roseville RT Station, hopefully with, with the ability to go higher, and we need the Franklin Boulevard site. And if we can do that and relieve Sean Luloy from the obligation of the $2.778 million on Colfax and spend that more wisely, and come up with a little more, more money, you done right, we can afford both Franklin and, and Roseville RT Station. Let's do that, and then we'll, then we're going to be talking about the, accommodating and helping hundreds of people, not 30 cars on Colfax Road. We can do better. We have to do better. Not my frustration, the public's frustration. And we're the public's representatives, all of us, elected and appointed. Thank you. All right. Is there anything else to come before the city council? Tonight? Council?
We're doing off agenda.
Yeah, we will, let, let me take public testimony, and I think it's not on the agenda.
Mayor, I have one hand raised from a phone number 4366.
Yes, hello, Mr. Davis.
Mr. Davis?
Yes, I, I would like to, to end by, by sending a shout out to some people that are involved in City Hall, such as Mr. Luloy, I want to start with him. I want to go on record and say, as I did my homework last week, I found out that he's, he's doing everything he can to help the Drumline at Grant High School. That's a wonderful gesture, because those are teenagers. I hear about the teenagers and the youth around the city, but I don't see the money being spent in Del Paso Heights. For instance, last week, I, I noticed in the Sacramento Bee that they did a story on the El Grove basketball team. They should have done a story, it was, they won the state championship. However, did you know Grant High School beat El Grove before they got to Golden One? Where's the story about that? Where's the, and then I saw where El Grove, the community did a big thing for them. So I'm looking for the city, and that includes the city manager's office, to spend some money and show some appreciation for what these young teenagers accomplished. And they did this during COVID. And so they should be recognized for that. So thank you, Mr. Luloy, and Mayor Steinberg, your, your name is very well respected in Del Paso Heights, because you actually attend events at Del Paso, in Del Paso Heights and at Grant High School. That means a lot to the community. We need to see the city manager more at events like that. They'll think he cares too.
He does.
But put some money out.
We all care.
Yeah, but put some money into those young people that won that championship and get the Sacramento Bee to do the same article that they did for El Grove. That's an example of-
Thank you for your comments, your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
I'll end with something kind, give Mindy a raise, she's in the chamber every time I watch.
Thank you, Mr. Davis, I have no more speakers, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Councilmember Valenzuela.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Related to the topic tonight, we started an important conversation at the Water Committee and with the Department of Utilities about access to drinking water among our unhoused population. It's a major public health issue, obviously, for folks experiencing homelessness, but also potentially for our system users, if folks attempt to access water using kind of unsanctioned methods. So the big question is not just how to do this, but how we would pay for this. So I'd like to tap the expertise of our Urack. So I'd like to add to the log direction for the Department of Utilities to work with the Utility Rate Setting Advisory Commission to develop a report for the Water Committee on potential projects to deliver water to unhoused residents and methods to pay for those projects. Potential projects should include near term and longer term approaches to address the unmet need for drinking water among those experiencing homelessness. And I will send this text to you, Mindy, so you can include it in next week's log. Thank you.
Mayor Prud, thank you, Mayor Prudhimgeta.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of announcements here, on Friday, for the annual vegetarian, I mean, the monthly vegetarian brunch at the Sacramento Chinese and Into China Friendship Association, we're going to be having a meet and greet and get to know your chief and deputy chief, Chief Lester and Norman Long here. And so we want to encourage people to come out at 10:00 AM at Elder Creek. It'll be a great event, plus it's always a wonderful vegetarian brunch with the, at the temple on Elder Creek. And then also on Sunday, Bridge Network, that's been doing a lot of work with our youth, trying to get ahead of, of the stresses and, and challenges that many of them have, is putting together a Bridge Network Sa- Saturday in the park. And that's going to be at 11:00 AM at Max Bear Park at the Elmo Slider Clubhouse. And so we encourage folks to come out, we have a lot of services for families as well, we want to help any folks there who are, have basic needs to come out. And with that, Mr. Mayor, that, that concludes my, my announcement. And for those who celebrate Easter, we want to wish everyone a blessed Good Friday and a blessed Easter.
Well, let's, let's, let's say, Happy Good Friday, Good Friday, Happy Easter, Happy Passover, and Ramadan Mubarak to all, all people of faith who are celebrating very important holidays over, over the course of this week. Hope it's a time for reflection for all of us about how we can all continue to do our part to heal the community and heal the world.
Mayor?
Yes, I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
And I didn't put my hand up, I just, when you said that, it made me think, and happy birthday to Councilmember My Vang on Thursday.
And yeah, happy birthday to Councilmember Vang on Thursday, yes. Absolutely. Anyways, everybody, have a good evening. If there's anything else to come before the council, we are adjourned. Thank you.